Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council meeting of October 14th, 2024. We'll start the meeting now with Mr. Franciac taking the role, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath. Mr. McDougal. Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
I understand Ms. Cleland McGrath is on vacation, unable to attend tonight, and I move that we excuse her absence.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Young.
Mr. McDougal had a corporate, you know, a job away, and so I ask that he be excused for tonight as well.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Walters to excuse Councilmember Cleland McGrath, and a second by Ms. Hubig. We also have a motion by Mr. Young, and then a second by Ms. Hubig to excuse Mr. McDougal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, the first item on the agenda is announcements and committee reports. I do have a few announcements. The first being that today, October 14th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this is a proclamation, this is a quote from President Biden's Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. "On Indigenous Peoples' Day, we honor Indigenous people's strength, courage, and resilience. We celebrate the vast contributions of Indigenous communities to the world, and we recommit to respecting tribal sovereignty and self-determination, and working to usher in a new era of our nation-to-nation relationships. On Indigenous Peoples' Day, we recognize that it is hard work to heal the wrongs of the past, and to change course and move forward, but together, nothing is beyond our capacity. May we take pride in the progress we have made to establish a new era of tribal sovereignty and Indigenous self-determination, one grounded in dignity, respect, and friendship." I also want to let people know about the Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum that is taking place here in council chambers this Wednesday, October 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00. It's going to be a meet-and-greet with the candidates, including for Skagit County Commission, and I believe the 10th, the 10th district. Also Senator Lovelace from our own district will be here, and I'm forgetting one other set of candidates, but I think it'll be well worth attending. And there will be a moderated forum and questions from the audience. Again, so that's Wednesday from 5:00 to 8:00 right here. Thursday, October 17th, is the Great Washington Shakeout. This year's, it's an international shakeout day when millions of people worldwide participate in earthquake drills at work, school, or home. As part of the Great Shakeout, Skagit County will conduct a countywide test of our Code Red Community Alert System. This is only a test and not an earthquake. Do not call 911. The Code Red system is designed to keep residents informed and safe during emergencies, and this test is vital to ensure its effectiveness. It's a collaborative effort, including Skagit County, the Skagit County Sheriff's Office, Cities of Anna-Cordis, Burlington, Mount Vernon, and Seidro Woolley, the towns of Concrete, Hamilton, Lyman, and La Conner, the Skagit County Fire Chiefs Association, the Skagit County Dyke District Consortium, Skagit 911, and Skagit County Emergency Medical Services. So obviously, a very collaborative effort amongst the whole county. We have a, our Comprehensive Plan Community Open House coming up on October 23rd, right here in council chambers from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., where you can learn about the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update Process and share your feedback. And something new is that kids and families are welcome at this event. There will be kid-centered information and activities available, so the whole family is welcome. I have one last announcement. I'd like to give a shout out to city staff, particularly the public-facing members of the Public Works Department, the Library, and the Parks Department for your commitment and professionalism that you bring to your jobs every day. Your dedication to our city and your care for the well-being of our people is greatly appreciated. Thank you. And now, moving on, we have the Economic Development Committee report.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Mr. Young.
Thank you very much. The Economic Development Committee met on the 8th. It was myself, Ms. Coleman, no, short-term kicked in real quick, Amanda Hubig, and Bruce McDougal, and also, of course, the staff was there, Mr. Coleman, as well as Stephanie. It was a great meeting. What we did was we reviewed the initial draft of the survey to go out, and we made comments. We did the analysis of each of the questions, and, you know, where they needed to be expanded, they were. And, you know, driving, making sure that the survey that comes out gets us what we want to know and what we believe will be actionable items. We were asking for general questions, but also in a specific realm. And so it was a wonderful discussion, and we've been able to move forward, of course, with Western Washington. And we believe that as soon as we're able to get it out to the public, we'll let you know that as well. But we believe that it would be a fruitful endeavor for our city as it will point us in a direction that we may want to go toward resolving some of the issues and/or creating opportunities here, partnerships, all of that. It's a wonderful thing, and I'm looking forward to it. And I believe that much of the staff and the people we've spoken with are looking forward to what we are finding as well. Anything you want to add, Ms. Hubig?
No, that was perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next up, we have the Finance Committee report, and I will do that one. That was a meeting last Thursday. I attended with Councilmember McDougal and Finance Director Steve Hoagland. And we talked a lot about our budget schedule and our capital facilities plan, which we'll go into more detail tonight as part of the regular agenda. Next, we have the Planning Committee report. Mr. Walters.
Thank you. The Planning Committee met right before this meeting, Ms. Moulton and myself. We talked about, first of all, an ordinance that we've drafted to adopt new permit timelines and adopt three process improvement measures pursuant to Senate Bill 5290 from the 2023 legislative session. The deadline on that is, is running, January 1, 2025. Those provisions of the new state law go into effect. So you'll be seeing that pretty soon. I think that we've decided on an approach, and that'll come forward. We also talked about the department's award of a grant from the Department of Commerce. It's being referred to as the Paper to Digital Grant. It's almost $200,000, and it includes a number of buckets of funding. One of those is to tune up our permitting software, SmartGov. One of those buckets is to do some training and implementation help for SmartGov. The lion's share of the grant is for digitizing paper records and incorporating the metadata into either SmartGov or Laserfish. And a much smaller portion of it is for an analysis of the permit workflow and sort of a non-SmartGov system tune-up. And we're looking at how we might rebudget additional money from the grant for that, for that purpose, because the cost of that work is probably going to exceed what's currently budgeted in the grant. We are anticipating somehow getting a new hearing examiner, and there was some discussion about an RFP process for solicitation of proposals for a new hearing examiner. And then we talked about some bluff erosion work in the native growth protection areas above the Gwemas Channel Trail. And some of their, sort of a number of issues with native growth protection area work throughout the city, and we hope to address those through a forthcoming future tree protection ordinance that would also address native growth protection areas.
Thank you. Next up is the Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Protam Moulton.
Mr. Fantini.
We met last week, the Port City Liaison Committee. It was myself, Councilmember Walters, and various members of the port and city were there. A couple of updates, the wastewater treatment plant, Outfall update. It's moving in a good direction, where possibly we might not have to utilize the blasting strategy. And we may go into a tunneling strategy, which would be great news. We'll know more on that soon. It would be a cost increase, but I think there are some pretty obvious benefits to a tunneling strategy versus a blasting strategy, so we look forward to hearing more on that. Also, Councilmember Walters mentioned the permitting process. We did discuss that as well. Looking forward to getting that grant and doing, moving a lot of the scanning and archiving of everything to that digital system. We also received an update on the Alter Americas Park. Papers and landscaping work is going to be going on now and through the end of this year. And then in early spring, they'll be looking at completing that project. And these are the first improvements, well, significant improvements, in 35 years there. And also, we're going to be starting work on a design for the Maritime Plaza Connection. And we're looking to get to 15% design on that before eventually searching for a grant. We also discussed the Event Center, and we reviewed the interlocal, our next interlocal, and there was some good feedback from members of council, from members of the port. And so we'll be looking to having a revised draft of that, incorporating some of those changes that will come before a joint meeting of the city and the port officials, port commissioners and city council. And we're looking at possibly the 28th or the 4th for a date on that, if everything continues to go on track and move along. Also, the port let us know that they're going to be having a study session for their budget on October 15th, and this is going to cover everything from parking lots to the CIP. And then also, our Cap Sandy Lookout Project is starting construction. So you'll remember that we're, of course, doing that great park, or Rotary is doing that great park up at the top of Cap Sandy, and that is going to be starting construction, if it, I think it actually has already, so, thank you.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
Just to tag on a little bit to Mr. Fantini's remarks, I understand we are targeting November 4th for that joint city-port meeting. And I sent committee members a revised copy of the interlocal today, and staff are going to get together and provide their comments sometime this week. So we'll have sort of consolidated draft to look at, I guess, by the beginning of next week.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. There isn't anyone signed up in advance in person, but if anyone would like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to approach the podium. I don't see anyone. I will look to see if there are any hands raised online. I don't see any, so we don't have public comment at the moment. Next up is the Consent Agenda. Council, we have items 5A through D.
Mayor Protam.
Mr. Young.
Short of any objection from council members, I move we approve Consent Agenda items A, B, C, and D.
We have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Walters to improve Consent Agenda items 5A through D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public hearing, we have Mr. Hoagland to talk about our 24 through, 2024 through 2029 Capital Facilities Plan Amendment. And this is a discussion. Welcome, Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, members of the council, members of the audience. As mentioned last week, we have advertising requirements that were required to meet before we can hold a public hearing. We have now met those requirements, so, so we'll hold the public hearing tonight. And similar to what we did with the revenue public hearing, I might suggest that, that we go through the staff presentation of projects and perhaps open the public hearing, and once taking public comment, perhaps close the public hearing again tonight with the kind of reminder to the public that we are happy to take public comment at any of our budget meetings on any of the items related to the, to the budget. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and pull the packet material up. The first department we'll look at tonight is Parks, and we have department staff to help us go through this, so please feel free to ask questions or for clarifications. So I do want to point out to begin with, if you look, so again, kind of a reminder, the first two columns here that we're looking at, 2024, and then 2025, just in the white background. Then we have 2025 with the green background. The 2025 with the green background is the proposed amended CFP year of 2025. And I wanted to point out just the total funding in the amended 25 as compared to the original 2025, the, the reduced level of activity. So the Parks Department, I think, did a nice job of scrutinizing their requirements and fine-tuning what those requirements were and needed as, as far as resources went. So to begin with, the Depot Plaza has been added to this at $300,000. The Hart Lake Shoreline Restoration at $150,000 is also a new project in the amendment. Little Cranberry Lake, $20,000. The Parks Infrastructure, that's generally funded at $50,000 for ongoing parks, projects, kind of those emergent infrastructure issues, and that's been reduced to $25,000 this year. You may remember from last week, going through the Ops and Transportation sections, there is a bit of demand for REIT in the coming year, so that was part of what played into that. Tommy Thompson Trussell and Causeway Replacement at $350,000. The Kuylulich Park at $15,000. Chip Harbor at $25,000. Pickleball Infrastructure at $75,000. Senior Center at $60,000. Storvik Park Volleyball Courts at $100,000. And the Skate Park restroom and parking lot at $700,000. So you'll notice up under the resources, contributions of $750,000 does obviously include that $700,000 that we're expecting to get from the private party for that skate park revision.
Mr. Walters.
Let's back up a little bit to the Little Cranberry Lake Shoreline. And this might be a question more for Mr. Lunsford or other park staff. But we've got in the existing CFP, $20,000 for 2024, and we're proposing $20,000 for 2025. I guess my first question is, have we spent that money during 2024? Have we spent $20,000 on the project already?
No, that, that money has not been spent on the project thus far.
Okay, so then we're pushing it forward into the future.
Correct.
Okay. We have gotten some comments about the Little Cranberry Lake project, which is not unexpected. We're, I think, all aware of some concern over that. I want to point out that the only money for this project in the plan, and you can only see one column here, but in the existing CFP, there's no money in future years for that project. There's no money in 2026, 2027, 2028, and we haven't really spent any money so far. So what we're talking about is $20,000 for the investigation design, the initial stages of the project. And some of that project is simply shoreline restoration. Now, there's talk about floats and armoring and hardening and various options, but we're not authorizing that at this point. All we're authorizing is the 20K for those initial stages of investigation. And I think that really defers the decision on the contours of the actual project to some later date. And I would ask park staff to confirm if that interpretation is, is true. And if so, I don't have any problem with what is shown here. And I don't think anybody else should feel uncomfortable with it either.
Correct. The, a lot of the money is private money. We would go through a permitting process like any other project.
Wait a minute, I, I'm sorry, what's the private money component?
Private money would be part of that $20,000.
Oh, sure. But really, we are only authorizing $20,000 to be spent, which doesn't build a project. It almost certainly doesn't really design the project to the level that's necessary to take it through permitting.
Correct, right.
Okay, so we're not making the judgment at this point about the project. And I think everybody should feel comfortable with that. I'm comfortable with that, and I, I don't have a problem with including that money. Because at, at a minimum, there is some shoreline restoration that needs to be done there, and that could eat up the $20,000 just in permitting and design work.
Mr. Hoagland. Tagging on to Mr. Walters's question about the numbers in the 2024 column, like, for example, the Little Cranberry Lake Shoreline, that wasn't spent in 2024, so it's moving into the amended 2025. Is that the case with all of the numbers in the 2024 column? Because we don't know if those have, is it universal that they haven't been spent? If it's the same amount in the amended 2025, or is sometimes the 2025 additional to the 2024?
Yeah, so I would say generally, we do have the project, details in the project sheets included in this week's data, but generally, when you see that transferring, that, that amount of money from '24 into '25, that's that same project that's, that's, that's moving. So from line to line, I can't say if some of those projects have started. There has, it may be the case that there's some spending starting on some of those projects, and we're identifying what we're expecting to spend in the, in the coming year. But generally, when you see that, that is the case, that the project is just moving from, we didn't get to it this year and is moving to the following year.
Okay, great, thank you. And my other question is, the, the lineup above in funding, the contributions. So for parks, it's $450,000. Is contributions, it sounds like some of that is donations? Are there other things in that category in addition to donations? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so generally, that's what that is, is donations. In this case, we had an agreement with MJB for $700,000. And some cases, in internal meetings, in some cases, that was referred to as revenue, and in some cases, grants. Some cases, donations. I just wanted to clarify in that case that that's where that resource line item was.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam Moulton.
Mr. Fantini.
Sorry to pepper you with questions. I know you're hoping we wait till the end. Question on the funding sources. So we have an impact fund for parks, right? And there, and my question is, so I think the last update we had on that was 2023. There's about $175,000 in that fund. Does that, is that part of the, the fund balance reserves? Is that?
No, in that case, if we were using impact, see, we, we do have a line about halfway down in the resource section called Impact Fees.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah.
So we're not putting, we don't put any of that into the CFP?
We, yeah, if we were using those impact fees, we would be calling those out right there. So, so we're not, we're not planning on spending any impact fees in 2025 in, in parks.
Okay, and then, as I was looking through all the project sheets, most of them are funded by REIT. It looks like most of the, and grants. Thankfully, we get a lot of grants.
Yeah.
But my question would be, what is that impact fee fund held for? And why don't we spend that money? Is that like a reserve that we keep for parks in case of emergency, or?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a really good, good question. So the, the, there's a statute that outlines impact fees can be collected, and it's kind of generally for the impact that growth has on those elements. So there's, you know, additional homes, additional families and people using the parks. So park impact fees are collected through that, that building permit process, and those fees are set aside to be used on projects that are identified in the impact fee report or the impact fee study that sets the level of impact fees. So then, so there's a defined list of projects that those can be used for. So we set those aside. They have to be used within 10 years, and we, we track that. But then we try to let that build up until there's an amount that makes sense to put towards one of those identified projects.
But it couldn't be used for any of these projects?
I'm not sure off the cuff if any of these are in that impact fee study or not, but, but, but it does require the use of those impact fees. There's two things. It requires that the project be listed in the CFP to use impact fees, and it also requires that it be identified in the impact fee study.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
I have more, more questions for parks on this list. I wonder if you could describe for us the Storvik Sand Volleyball Courts.
Mr. Hoagland didn't want to answer that, so I will. So Nicole Johnson here, our parks managers, if you want to go into the weeds, she knows all the answers. So we are working with a community group to revitalize the northwest corner of Storvik Park. Currently, there's old horseshoe pits and croquet lawn, and that was all she used for lawn darts years ago. So we are trying to find a way to work in that area to build two sand volleyball courts, because that is what the community has come forward with requesting. So we have asked for, I believe, 50 in REIT there, or where are we looking at?
Yep, that's right.
Yeah, and then we would try to raise 50 from the community, because in the past, the community, pre-COVID, was interested in building two courts there. We proposed building one court this year, but the community came back to us, the users, and said, no, we would like to have two there to make it more functional for tournaments and games and things that we would normally do. So that's the genesis of that project. It was planned for 2019. COVID put a wrench in the, in the works, and it's come back now, because we think we have a plan. Much of that would be done in-house. Ms. Johnson, do you have anything to add to that?
Were, were sand volleyball courts planned way back in 2019? Because I thought you did a, a community outreach process to determine that you were pursuing sand volleyball courts. And that was last year?
Right, so five years ago, maybe six, we talked about putting, a community group came forward with sand volleyball courts. Then that kind of, that, that died off, and so we looked at a number of things. And we looked at a pump track there, which we've since put at the skate park. We looked at different things. People advocated pickleball there, but we decided pickleball, that close would be maybe not a popular thing.
I'm sure it would be popular.
I'm sure it would be popular, but just not with some. We, some people advocated community garden. We already have a spot for that. And so through that process, sand volleyball courts reemerged as the top choice, and that's why it's, that's why it's here.
Okay. I pass no judgment on the sand volleyball court project. I don't play it myself. But the basketball courts that are adjacent, those will remain, right?
Correct.
Have we looked at other projects to make, for instance, those courts more usable year-round, covering them? I anticipate the sand volleyball court will have sort of a pretty narrow part of the year that it will be usable?
Yeah, no, that, that is true. That is one of the criticisms. But with any outdoor court, we have, pickleball even, there's a limited timeframe that people tend to use it, but, you know, that is the nature of our summers. Covering a court like at Storvik would be, we would rather put that money into a gymnasium somewhere that could be heated and, and well-used in that way. Because like covering, just from our example at the skate park, they thought a cover would be well over a million dollars to just cover the skate park, because that was a desire of some of the skaters. And so that kind of money, we thought, would be better pushed towards something else, so. That's why, that's why we refrain from a covering, say, at Storvik.
You think that's the type of money we'd be looking at at, at Storvik for the basketball courts?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Moulton.
Mr. Fantini.
I have, you can stay right up there. Sorry. In regards to the pickleball courts, since we're talking so much about that one, I noticed the project talked about possibly moving, adding courts, adding noise. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, we are having a community meeting coming up in November?
November 14th.
November 14th, where members of our community can come out and, and voice their opinion, yea or nay, or, or however that is about the courts and their.
Right.
Will we be talking about any of this then? Or will we use some of that feedback to kind of inform what we do with that, that line item?
Yeah, all the answers are yes. So our desire is to have a broad conversation about pickleball, to take some of the grievances and hear those from the neighborhoods of Clear Ridge that would like to see that change, to hear from the pickleball community that would like to see more outdoor courts, because they prefer to play outdoors when they can. And so we've tried to talk to the school district about changes at 22nd and J to improvements there. Could we cooperate with some private donors and ourselves? That's why our money's there, and, and the district is in a hard time, so perhaps not that, but just... just making those spaces available. So that's one option, because you already have courts there, you have parking there. That's a place where people could go. So we're talking to them about that, and have reached out a couple of times to the district. So all those kinds of things will be happening for that meeting on the 14th at 6:00.
The 14th.
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. I just want to say how much I appreciate the thought that goes into the work that the staff does. Truly, it's not always easy balancing, you know, interests. You know, because everybody's got generally a legitimate interest that they're interested in. But finding that balance that works for the majority of our citizenry is not an easy thing. And sometimes, those choices won't make 100% happy. I'm not sure if that ever really happens. But we do try for it. And, you know, and so what I choose to do at this moment, and I agree with all of the questions, but what I'm choosing to do is to also say thank you for the thought that goes into it. And also, thank you for the effort to bring in people to have their opinions heard. Everybody wants their opinion heard. And as public servants, that's our goal, and that's our job. And making those decisions are what it really comes down to as the bottom line, trying to make the best possible decision with the limited resources that we have to do the most good. And so, you know, I tend to like to take these moments to say thank you, because I really do mean that. And I know how hard it is sometimes in being public servants, that sometimes it can seem like a thankless job. But even when you have people that are not saying thank you, there are people out there that are satisfied. And so I tend to try to like to speak for them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I think that the thanks goes to our staff in the field that does a lot of the work. They're working at All Terr Americas this week, doing that in-house, because it will save the city money and kind of get it... The care it needs to be done, the way we'd like to see it done. Same thing at Storvik. Our staff will do a lot of that work in-house to save money and save resources that can be used elsewhere. So thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Hoagland about the Gwimus Channel Trail EIS. That $400,000 was dedicated by a vote of the council for 2024 budget to do that EIS and really start moving forward with a complete look of what this project needs to move forward. And I see that it's not in... I don't believe we've done it this year, so could you talk about that?
I might need help with that question.
I was eager to hear Mr. Hoagland's answer, but I don't want to put him through that. So we took that out of 2025, 2024, because it would have to come out of Parks reserves. And so we took it out of 2024 and 2025, because Parks Reserve is just being used to fund parks. So other money that we'd hoped for perhaps didn't materialize for that EIS. So we are pushing it, I believe, to 2026 now, in the hopes that that funding may come available through other means. That's so we've, you know, in talking to council at our retreat and such, we decided to keep our level of service with the staffing that we currently have, to provide the community with the services that we provide through their maintenance work and work throughout the year. So that's why I did not enter it into 2025 or 2026 at this point.
That sounds reasonable from a park standpoint. But I recall, I feel that there was very strong support from council for this. And I know we have a tricky, extra tricky budget this year, where we're trying to make up for some things. But I'm just going to say right now publicly that that is very important to me as a citizen and a council member. And I will advocate for finding money for that somewhere else in the budget for 2025. Because we've just put this, in my opinion, we've put this off long enough. We need this for the community. We need this for our transportation corridor. And so, anyway, we'll talk more about this.
Madam Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
Before Ms. Lunsford gets too far away there, I have a couple additional questions. The pickleball infrastructure item seems to be around adding capacity on pickleball. There was an email thread just a couple of weeks ago, though, about some sound dampening improvement to the existing pickleball courts. Do we have funding for that project?
So that's a great question. Thank you for asking. So our intention with the sound dampening is to work with the Parks Foundation on that. So identifying funding through the foundation to... And Ms. Johnson knows a lot more than I do, if you want to get into the weeds on it. But strengthening the fence to hold the sound dampening, it's not a sound eliminator. It just muffles the sound a bit.
So...
So that would be Parks Foundation money towards that project, not City Funds.
But we still need to show the project in our CFP.
If... Well, yeah, we could. So that would be something we could add here. That's not a bad idea. It's something we're looking at potentially doing.
I... Given the levels of unrest associated with the pickleball courts, it seems like if we can make that happen in 2025, we should make that happen in 2025. And even if it's a project that's privately funded, we need to show it in the CFP. So I would like us to show it in the CFP. I mean, it can include a proviso that says we're waiting on private funding. But... And if we don't get it, maybe we don't pursue it, at least immediately, but...
Could you see us adding it just 25,000 to the infrastructure that's already there? Or just calling it out separately?
Well, my only caution about that is this is about adding capacity. And I think there's a portion of the public that really wants to see us deal with existing noise issues separate from adding capacity. So I don't know that I think that... I don't think those should be conflated. I don't know what the amount of money is associated with that project. Maybe it's less than the CFP threshold.
25-ish.
Okay, so it's right there at the CFP threshold. Yeah, I would really like to see that in the CFP for 2025.
Okay.
And then, we are looking forward to, in the next two, three years, losing the Port Dog Park. Not our park, not our responsibility for the park facility, but the service that's provided by the dog park is one that's only provided by one other park. We want people to manage their dogs on leashes in all of our other parks. So have we contemplated doing any other improvements to the H Avenue Dog Park over the next year or a couple of years in anticipation of losing the other one?
Not of that nature. We're looking at other venues for other dog parks.
Oh, okay.
So we're talking to private parties about that at this point.
Okay. I know that there was some... More than one person who had written to us asking for support for improvements to the small dog area at the H Avenue Park and other improvements. Any of those on the horizon for 2025?
Not with the current budget that we have. I mean, if donors came forward, we could make some small improvements that they're looking for. But, I mean, a shelter can be... To build it correctly can be several thousand dollars. So we would gladly talk to them about private funding if they wanted to do that. That's well below the capital facilities threshold of what they're looking at doing there. But we are looking with private landowners at perhaps building new dog parks if that comes through.
Okay. I don't know where this should be prioritized in the grand scheme of things, but it does seem to me that over the next several years, we need to do more dog park improvements. And some of the dog parks in Bellingham, for example, are really pretty spectacular. And I think our dog owners would really appreciate it.
Really? Thank you.
I count myself as one of those. So...
I understand that, yeah.
I also just want to... So I'm not necessarily asking for anything in particular to be added, but I wanted to raise that point, because we're going to have to add it soon. We're going to have to do more work, I think, in the dog park space soon. Maybe not next year. I wanted to talk a little bit about Ms. Molten's point about the $400,000 that we advocated for the Gwimus Channel Trail EIS. I think that there were a couple of things we were trying to accomplish there with that. One was to actually break the logjam and get moving on the Gwimus Channel Trail extension. Two was to make sure that the environmental component of that is properly evaluated. I certainly understand Mr. Lunsford's point about, in a down-budget year, we may need $400,000 worth of Parks reserves to cover ongoing existing level of service in the Parks Department. However, and we're not yet talking about the full city budget, my sense of the budget problem is not a one-time problem. It's more of a structural problem, which means the Parks Reserves lasts for a little while and then nothing. So, you know, if we had to choose between paying employees' salaries or doing Gwimus Channel Trail, we'd pay employees' salaries. But if it's a structural problem, that's just kind of delaying inevitable. We need to fix the structural problem for all of our departments. So I'm looking forward to, I guess, more of an in-depth discussion of that overall operating budget problem, and then coming... Circling back, because we still want the Gwimus Channel Trail to proceed in one form or another. It seems to me we've got to have that operating budget discussion first, but then I would like to revisit the trail conversation.
I don't think there's any staff opposition to the EIS. It's just more of a funny question. Where are the funds going to come from?
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Young.
I'd like for Mr. Walters to explain a little bit more in depth what you mean about a structural problem, because I'm a little at loss, and I'm not trying to be difficult. But, you know, I do think that once we are looking at a budget tightening, that I think everything comes on the table. And so we have to do the things that we think are more fruitful for the city based upon the dollars that we've got. So when you were saying structural problem, I'm not sure what you were meaning. So if you could kind of sort of help me a little bit on the language.
Sure. I'm wondering, I think we've gotten pretty well into the weeds just in the park section, and we still have a lot to come. I think we do absolutely need to have that conversation. And I'm wondering if we should push it back to when we get further along in the budget process, and we're addressing that?
I would appreciate that then, but what I'm not clear about was what Mr. Walters was saying a structural. So if he could give me just two sentences, that would be helpful for me.
Sounds good. Maybe just a brief overview.
I will be brief. The Parks Reserves are a one-time bucket of money, and I understand our budget problem is not a one-time expense. It's an ongoing set of expenses. Can't fix an ongoing expense with a one-time bucket of money. Can only fix ongoing expenses with ongoing revenues.
Something, if I may, I... Generally, my budget message, finance director budget message, it goes into the budget book and other places. I'll document that city finances really only work in an expanding economy, because we're so reliant on sales tax. So once that contraction starts, or even... Like, we haven't even really seen contraction, but we've just seen a leveling off in retail spending. But our, you know, expenditure streams continue to grow, even at the pace of CPI, you know, we're falling behind because of that.
Okay. Moving onward. Anything else on parks before we move on to our next section?
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
Sorry, I just wanted to touch on one more thing, not to beat a dead horse here. But I wanted to go back to the Cranberry Lake. I think Mr. Walters was explaining this pretty well, but I just want to cover this. There is no definitive decision at this time to move forward with a float or a kayak launch. These are things that still go through the community process. I know that we've had a lot of community outreach about this, but also a lot of hesitation. So I'm just... I just want to be very clear. Like, this isn't something we're moving forward with right now. Is there still part of a public process, or is this signed, sealed, delivered? I guess is my question.
No, we have... We are still getting our design, our concept designs, and then our actual design. And then we would get to a permit-ready status, and then we would apply for permits. Once we have our design, I think the public is looking at us to come back and talk to them about that. Then we would do that and then begin our process. That'd be my approach to it, once we have our designs, which we don't have.
Sure.
So designs, that would finish our biological assessment, and then they would come up with our mitigation. And then we'd have a conversation about that with the public, because I think that's where we left it with the public, is they wanted to know what we were going to do and how we're going to mitigate it.
So there will still be an opportunity for the public to comment? And actually, at the next point, the public can comment, there will be more of a proposed plan of what you think we should be doing?
That's what we were going to bring them some drawings, yeah, when we're ready. But we're not at that point yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Moving on to storm.
All right, thank you. Trying not to get dizzy as I scroll down through here to the storm overview. Okay. So the biggest thing you'll note in storm is the addition of a couple of new projects. So this top-line item here, Storm System Restoration and Upgrades, it's an ongoing line item in the CFP and operating budget for maintenance on the storm system. What has been added to 2025 through this amendment process is to address a flooding issue on the Fidalgo Bay Road. That's estimated at $250,000. And down on near some MJB property, there is a pipe and outfall that needs to be placed. And that's also estimated at $250,000. And I believe we have public works staff. If you have any questions about that, they would be happy to answer.
Okay, seeing none, I think we can move on to our next section.
Great. Okay, so wastewater is the next section that we have. So all of our resources are listed under user fees or rates. This is user rates and user fees. So even under circumstances where we'll be drawing from either cash reserves or in not... We don't have plans for debt in the wastewater fund, but we would still generally list those resources as user fees, because everything comes down to being funded with those user fees. The first item that we have is Pump Station 16. That was initially identified at $2 million in 2024, and that's been amended to 20... In 2025, of 1.855 million. And the pump station ongoing upgrades, again, $400,000. The INI effort at 1.5 million. The plant administration building expansion at 820,000. The new CSO pump station at 4.5 million. Covered shed for the north pad at 150, refined down from 170. $400,000 for emergent repairs. Nutrient removal at 100,000, remains unchanged. An additional vehicle at 50,000 remains unchanged. Number one, aeration blower with efficient hybrid at 200,000, unchanged. Aeration blower number two, diffusers at 250,000. Dewatering pump at 150,000. Incinerator preheat unit at 200,000, and polymer pump skids at 80,000. Any questions on any of those projects on the first page?
Mr. Walters.
Thank you. On the previous page, the stormwater projects, I think we are showing the F4 Basin project, the capacity improvements moving forward in time. They're just being deleted out of the 2025 CFP budget. Yeah, storm F4 Basin capacity improvements. So 50,000 was budgeted for this year, 310 for next year, to get that portion of the stormwater system fixed, and that's just going away. Do we lack money to do that project? Because I have some familiarity with this project. I perceive this project to be pretty important, because it affects all the development upstream and constrains development upstream in areas that some of our development plans depend on. Do we not have this much money in the storm budget? Or is there some other reason we're deferring the project to the future?
So we're deferring the project...
So we're deferring the project for another reason. We have an antiquated outdated stormwater system model. We're creating a new one as part of our stormwater master plan. I don't know if this basin is your highest priority basin at this point. By the end of the year, we will know and that might be the one. But for now, we're pushing it out until we can get our plan in place. And so we know pretty specifically where we need to do the stormwater investments in a prioritized fashion.
Okay, and you're anticipating we'll have that planned by the end of this year?
I think all the plans will be done by the end of this year, yeah.
Okay. Would there be any harm in leaving it in the budget? So you could do the project if it still?
I think the others, I only have one person. So I think those other projects are, they do take priority. We have a road that floods every.
So we're confident on the other projects, but just not this one?
I feel very confident those need to happen.
Okay. And you think that that might use up your capacity and able to plan and manage the projects?
That and then just the actual overall budget per year for the utility. We don't have a whole lot for capital investment. So yeah, those two other ones take priority.
And is there sufficient fund balance to pay for that, for this project? If you had management capacity?
I believe the revenues are 731,000. So you can see that between the three projects, we're getting there.
Yes, well, that's what you've programmed for funding from rates. But there's a fund balance line. I thought that the fund balance line would be where you'd dig in. Or are those the same?
Yeah, no, so there's currently about 1.7 million in cash in the storm fund and that's what we're estimating to end the year with as well. So there's probably sufficient cash there, but there's not an overwhelming amount of cash. You may remember several years ago, the storm fund was in a bit of a financial pinch and we kind of built up from there. So it's healthier now than it has been in a long time. But still working on trying to get as healthy as possible. But again, there's 1.7 million there. So there's a reasonable amount of cash to do projects that need to get done.
Sure, okay. But if we run out of ability to plan and manage the projects, then we still have a constraint. I'm aware of this project of being a problem for quite some time. And certainly it's possible that the model might show that's not the case because we haven't had an up-to-date model. And maybe we can't fit this project into our work plan for 2025, but I would still like to continue to highlight it. So given that this amount of money was to be spent in 2025, if we're deleting it for 2025 and 2024 is in the rearview mirror, will you lose this project in the plan? Will the project drop out of the plan entirely? Because we're not showing moving money to future years here, so.
Yeah, I don't know if this is your highest priority. So you'll know, we'll know as soon as we have the plan done, exactly which pipes are undersized and the consequences of those and the likelihood of failure of those will also be known. And so looking at your stormwater system through that lens, I don't know if that's the right project. I can't tell you.
Sure, yeah, no, I take your point there. My question is, are we going to lose this project out of the plan here when we shift the money and no columns appear filled in with dollar signs anymore?
So we're not planning on taking any projects out of the CFP? This is just the 2025 amendment. So like, everything still stands unless we're, do we offer up any deletions of any projects in the CFP that I'm aware of?
Okay, and then when we actually adopt this thing, are we going to adopt sheets that kind of look like this? Or are we going to adopt revised six-year worksheets? Because that would answer the question, like, where are the projects going? What are you proposing to put in front of us as the ordinance?
It's a good question. So it's a little different than what we've done in the past. So my thinking was that we would just have the changes for 2025 in the amending ordinance. But we have those supporting sheets there as well to kind of tell the whole story for the rest of the planning period. So this project should still be in one of those out years for the storm drain system.
Okay, so then we'll have to look at two documents to see what the currently adopted CFP is, but that'll get cleaned up in the 2025 comp plan update. Yes?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you, you can see me going already. I have two questions. And one, this is my first CFP, so I apologize if this is a dumb question right away. But to Mr. Ray's point, once we have the plan for the stormwater, the master plan, can we go back and amend the CFP at any point in time? So I guess what I'm saying is, is like, obviously, if you're moving it around, because I appreciate the fact that we're not saying we're going to do this because we want to evaluate and do the plan first and then decide what we're going to do. But can we amend the CFP like it, is it like quarterly? Do you see what I'm kind of saying?
Sure, yeah, and we can amend the CFP when we amend the operating budget.
Okay, so there's still, and we might have the stormwater plan by then?
Yeah, if we have capacity and we have funding, we are more than happy to start replacing pipes next year. I think a good example of this would be like the facilities, let's say, the furnace went out on one of the buildings. We did not have it in the agenda. We definitely would come to you for a budget amendment to get that furnace fixed because you have to have a furnace.
So planning is really important, obviously. But there's a way that if something happens, we can come back and correct it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Unless there was any other on stormwater, I had some wastewater treatment, wastewater. So I recently, as I was looking through all these projects and I appreciated the sheets on each project, I had recently gone at the beginning of the year to tour the wastewater treatment plant. And I was very amazed by its like, hey, this is, you know, the three rubber bands and four paper clips that we've rigged up to make this thing last an extra year. So I just wanted to voice support for all of these projects when it comes to wastewater, specifically because there's a lot that needs to be replaced there. And as we are encouraging density and planning for growth and there will be a lot more toilets to flush, I think addressing a lot of these things that have kind of, we've managed to extend past their life. I read a lot of the details in these projects. I just, I think these are very important projects, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fantini. And lest the public worry, we know that he was joking about the rubber bands and the paper clips.
Totally joking about the rubber bands and paper clip.
Okay, so any more on wastewater? Mr. Walters.
Just one point of clarification. In the past, we have used the CFP as a planning document. But last year and this year, we have really used the CFP as the capital authorizing budget document. And I'm going to try to characterize this and explain it. I want Mr. Hoagland for you to jump in if I get anything wrong. But basically, in the past, we've had a list of projects and those were the planned projects and we may or may not have accomplished those and we might have gone beyond those so long as the money was reflected in the adopted budget. But now we're doing things a little differently and showing the projects in the capital budget and they don't appear in the operating budget. And so this is authorization to spend money.
So these capital projects will flow into the operating budget, so.
Do they show up in the operating budget that we see and adopt?
Yes, yeah, so they will be included. You'll see the, as we're going through the departments, you'll see the capital bars numbers and they will be included in the totals in the budget ordinance that's adopted.
Okay, well, we can talk more about that then. But I think the important point is that these are the authorized amounts to spend. And if we go beyond that, we won't be acting in accordance with the capital plan, which is a requirement under GMA. So we still need to be pretty careful about what it is we authorize here and consider all of these as authorized projects.
Okay, thank you. So if there's nothing else on wastewater, we'll move on to water treatment and distribution on the drinking water side.
Sorry, bear with me, close your eyes for a sec. Okay, so water systems. Again, looking at the 2025 as originally adopted, 8.714 and the proposed amendment at 8.5, so refined a little bit downward. And we do have a grant identified at 156,000 along with 8.3 million in user fee funding. First item is in the Oak Harbor system. So as a reminder, the city water system, City Vanacortus is regional provider. We have a regional system, an Oak Harbor system that has the water lines that run out from Sharp's Corner out to Deception Pass Bridge. There are two of those lines. One of them, the City and the City Vanacortus and the City of Oak Harbor share the cost in that. And that's the project that we're talking about here. At 3.1 million, so there were two phases, if you will, to that project. The first phase, we've collected the share of capital from Oak Harbor for their response, the share they're responsible for. This would be for the second phase that we'll start collecting for their share. The refinery system, again, that's another section or segment of the City Vanacortus water system. It's the lines that take off of the main 36-inch lines and run out to March's Point that supply the refinery area. So the city shares some of those costs as well. There are a few city customers out there. It's the vast majority of that water is used by the refineries. But that's what this project is on those, one of those water lines going out to that area. Cathodic protection at 120,000, that's been bumped up a little bit from the originally adopted CFP. 60,000 for a storage building. 380,000 for controls reliability. 90,000 for repairs to the 36-inch line near the Swenomish Slough. Water treatment plant discharge meter replacement at 960. So you may remember this from an amendment we did earlier in the year. Originally, this project was scheduled, I believe, in the 2027 timeframe. They had an issue develop, I think it was a leak that developed that required them to start working on that project right away. So we did that amendment earlier in the year and we were able to move this project as part of the regional system. But it's eligible for FEMA funding. So we were able to move it to the immediate timeframe because we did have funding for that. 125,000 filter optimization. 225,000 for this system plan update. Water system security at 350,000. Emergent equipment replacements at 400,000 and the annual pipeline replacement project at 1.6 million. Reriffing the booster station on A Avenue at 8,000.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
Maybe before you move on to the next section of this, on the prior section, the controls reliability project, there's no change to this project. So is that, is it just included here for completeness? Phase four and five water treatment plant controls reliability project?
Right, so yeah, there's no change to that. So just identifying that for the coming year.
Okay, thanks.
Reservoir upgrades and maintenance, 300,000. An additional service vehicle at 43,000 and the Whistle Lake Dam project at 240,000. And then an additional pickup truck, a flatbed at 75,000. The rest of these projects listed here were either moved out to future year or moved into the operating budget and out of the capital realm.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
I have a question about the Oak Harbor line. And it's just so that I can understand it correctly. So obviously, even though we're sending, because we charge them for the water, I guess, is why we're not going to be asking them to pay for any of this? Is that?
So this, yeah.
Are they paying for part of, I don't?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, so this project will take place on that section of water line that Oak Harbor and the City of Vanacortus share. So we have some number of customers out there. And we split those capital costs based on the consumption that goes through that line. So we can monitor that consumption through the meters that we have placed along that line. And that's generally around 80/20. So Oak Harbor uses generally about 80% of the water that goes through that line and the City of Vanacortus uses about 20%. So we'll monitor the actual cost of that project and then allocate those capital costs accordingly based on the percentage split.
So even though it's on here, I guess, for 3100, that'll be split at some point. Not split evenly, but that'll be divided at some point and a portion will go to Oak Harbor.
That's correct, yeah, we identified.
And they know this?
They do.
That's like an agreement, okay.
Yes, I've actually got a meeting with the Oak Harbor Finance Director tomorrow. We'll be talking more about this. So, yeah, that 3.1 million is the total cost of the project and then we'll split that between the two parties based on consumption. Any other questions on the water system? Yeah, I think that's it. I think the next section we get into is just backup documentation for the projects that we went through last week. So, yeah, so you get into fiber then.
It looks like it is, everything we saw last week too. So essentially, what we have in our packet is a complete CFP.
Yes, correct.
As the draft, I guess it is right now, but yes, okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland, thank you, staff.
Yeah, thank you. So if there are no other questions, then Mayor Protem, you're probably welcome to open the public hearing.
Let's do that. So I will open the public hearing on the CFP. For anyone who would like to make comments on or related to the CFP that we've heard over the last two weeks, you can come on up to the microphone or raise your hand if you are online and would like to speak. I'm looking over, looking at the Zoom meeting here. Do we see anyone that wants to? I don't see anyone in chamber, oh, I do, actually. Come on up and state your name and the city in which you live, please.
Linda Martin, Vanacortus. Just about the parks, three comments and maybe a question. Thank you for bringing up the Gwemas Channel Trail again. It's so important. For six years, I've heard about it. And once again, it sounds like it's going to be put off. So thanks for bringing that up, I appreciate it. The N Avenue Park, which is the name I really can't pronounce and I will, it will be bad. My understanding is that the improvements to that park was supposed to be paid for by the port. So if somebody could look into that, it was part of the agreement with closing off a section of Commercial Avenue. And so you might want to just check that, it's not a huge amount, but. And then the third thing, West Sixth, you have some property there that has been promised as a park and I don't hear or see anything about that. So those three things. Thank you also for taking the fiscal part of this really seriously. I do want to say too, that last week, as I heard about the LTAC money and how carefully you looked at that. you looked at that and even though there was, there were more requests, you, you were setting aside some money for a future plan, that was a smart thing to do and it would be really smart to look at this as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments from the public? Okay, I don't see any. And as Mr. Hoagland said earlier, we will be accepting public comment through the entire CFP and budget process. So, with that in mind, I will now close the public hearing. And anyone who'd like to comment on capital projects in the future can do so at any of our budget meetings. They can reach us by email and we'll be holding many meetings in the, in the, in the coming weeks. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
From what I understand, we are not anticipating adopting this until we adopt the budget, right?
That's correct.
That leaves us quite a bit of time. I, I think it would be worthwhile to take that time and integrate what we have in front of us into the rest of the existing CFP so that we're able to work off of one document. Because what we have in front of us is just the 2025 figures and not the remaining five years in the planning period. And as, as we go into the comp plan, as we compare notes on these things, I think it would be pretty helpful to take that time and put that together. Because we do have a number of months, right? All of October, all of November, a portion of December before we need to adopt.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, it's something that we could accomplish.
Yeah, I think we have a little over two months and I do agree that it would be nice to have one document and then all the context would be there as, as well.
And including those project description pages.
Yeah.
Yes, that we've all come to love. We didn't realize how much until they were gone. We're glad to have them back. Thank you.
And, and as an example of, of why that's important, the, the West Side Park that Ms. Martin mentioned is in, it's not in the document that's in the packet, I don't think. Maybe, maybe it is. But it, it's definitely in the prior document and listed for 2025. So, I mean, it becomes hard to keep track of these things if we don't have it all in one, one document.
Yeah, it's a point, it's a point well taken, for sure.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Hoagland and staff. I really, really appreciate all the work you've done to get us to this point and it hasn't been easy, I know, but good job.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we move on to other business. Item 7A is Resolution 3168. It's the Public Right-of-Way American, Americans with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. And Mr. Rayum is here to give us an overview of that.
I opened the wrong presentation. Hold on. Sorry. Will they be, be able to see that online? Okay. Thanks, sorry about that. This is the American with Disabilities Act Public Right-of-Way Transition Plan. This is a plan that we're looking for council to approve by resolution. It's been a really interesting experience, kind of learning about the barriers that we do have in our community and kind of how many there are. One of the kind of takeaways I'd say, as you look into this, and we'll get to that slide, but there's, there's a bit of work to be done, basically. The thing I wanted to let you know is the consultant has done this for many cities in, in Washington and they said, "We look really good." So, just kind of keep that in mind compared to other cities of our size that we're, we're in pretty good shape, but we do have work to do. So, with that, I'll mosey through here. Oh, one other thing real quick too. This is a required plan for the state of Washington. So, if you wanted to receive grant funds, they have already asked for, like, when is this going to be passed by council? Just so that, just so you're aware of that, it's something that we definitely need. If we need to make changes to it, we can do that if you want to postpone the resolution. But we would be coming back pretty quickly, just so we're eligible for grant funding in the coming grant cycles. So, Sydney Neal, she's the Public Works Administrator. She'd be standing here, but she's on paternity leave, so you get me again. The consultant team was Transportation Solutions. Jennifer Salmon, she actually walked all the sidewalks and determined their ADA, or you know, if they qualify or not as ADA compliant. Victor Salmon's her father, he's an engineer, an excellent transportation engineer. So, we're just going to go over the plan with you and then again, a quest, request that the council adopt the plan by resolution.
Ooh, sorry, I didn't mean that to be so loud. Mr. Rayum, could you talk a little closer to the microphone? You're sort of cutting in and out.
Am I? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Usually thought I'd catch that. Sorry. We're going to describe the methods used to remove accessibility barriers, provide prioritization of the barriers, which is kind of the neat part. And then, I'm the public official responsible to implement the plan, just so you know. So, there's policy personnel procedures are included in the plan. The, the public services and programs activities, those are, we can address that. It doesn't have to be in the plan for it to be in a, you know, state of Washington approved plan, but it's a good thing to have. We could do that in future additions of this. Physical barriers are basically the curb ramps and the sidewalks that we have in the community. We did not include, which now when you drive down Commercial, you'll see it every time I do, the street light pole is right in the middle of the sidewalk. Many of them do have a way for a wheelchair to get around it, but kind of in that era when we built Commercial the way we did, that's when you just stuck everything, fire hydrant, mailbox, it didn't matter. You just put it right in the middle of the sidewalk and that is a barrier for somebody that's in a wheelchair. So, those aren't included in the plan, but those are also something we need to, to look at. There it is. I'm, if I'm responsible, you can blame me if this doesn't work out. And then, the coordinator is Sydney Neal. We did public notice, the accessible pedestrian sign policy and the ADA grievance procedure are all available online on our website. Okay, so this is where you get kind of into the details. The, the curb ramps, so we have a total of 1,974 curb ramps. 662 of those are compliant with current ADA standards. No, the current ADA standards, we'll get in that in just a little bit. Noncompliant is 1,272. The accessible pedestrian signals, those are the push buttons and so those need to be a certain height and distance out that, so you can actually use them if you're in a wheelchair. And then, this, again, the sidewalks, like I told you, the, the streetlights and the sidewalks and then accessible parking and then the driveway ramps so people can get across sidewalks. We didn't evaluate those, but those are, those could be barriers. Am I still talking close enough or am I going in and out? Okay, just making sure. So, this kind of gives you what they mean by not being compliant. So, the dark green are the ones that are compliant. And then, so as soon as you slip into the light green, which is really just getting truncated domes on the surface of the ADA ramp, that'll make it compliant. So, you're about halfway there with just getting those all basically just updated a little bit. Then, when you get into the yellow ones, those are, those have cracking, faulting, some issues with them that you need to replace them. And same with the orange and the red are non-existent or you wish they weren't there kind of thing. So, that kind of gives you an idea of, of what you're looking at. About half the time, you're in pretty good shape. If you are, you know, you have vision impaired, the, the ones with the truncated dome, that's super useful to, to have that texture for them to walk across.
Mayor Protem.
Ms. Hewitt.
Thank you. Would you go back one more slide to the one you were just on? So, this is, this right here is specifically for ramps, right?
Yes.
Can I ask a question about, when it comes to ADA, is this specifically for people with wheelchairs? Is it walkers? Is it any kind of motorized? Is it, can you, can you just define this a little bit more for us? What population we're looking at serving?
Sure. So, the, the disabled community includes wheelchairs. That's usually the larger thing that we need to navigate through the sidewalk system, but it also helps with, with the people that are blind or deaf. And so, there are, you know, for, for the blind, having those, having, even having a mailbox, for example, in the road there, you, you want some indication when they're using their walking sticks that they know it's coming so they don't walk into it versus it just, if they hit the post, it's too late with their walking stick because they're going to hit it. So, that's just an example of something, the, those little truncated domes that, like I said, those are textured so you can actually feel them with a walking stick before you're in the road.
Okay, that's what I thought those were for. I had a constituent come up to me and ask if any consideration had been made for how difficult those would be to navigate for somebody with a walker, maybe that didn't have wheels on it. Because they, they are bumpy, they're kind of hard for you to pick up walkers and move over. I'm assuming that the advocates that focus on the disability groups are aware of this and they have good reasoning around the bumps and all of the decisions that are made, right?
So, interesting enough, just kind of going through this hearing from the, there's a community group that actually is, represents the blind. And so, I went and got to meet with them and kind of hear their side of it. They feel like since the American with Disabilities Act was passed, it was really heavily focused on wheelchairs. And so, it was just kind of interesting to kind of see the dynamic, there's a dynamic there between different groups of disabled people and like what, you know, like you said, like if you're in a walker, those truncated domes aren't exactly useful trying to walk across them, but they're needed for the blind.
And there's probably a lot of information on this organization's website as well as the ADA website that the federal government hosts.
Yeah, there's like a national standard for what we're supposed to have, yeah. And it, and it changes often. That's why I kind of caveated with like, this is the current, so like the push buttons, for example, we put in brand new push buttons on our avenue that are now noncompliant because they just changed the standard. Well, it's not adopted yet, but it's already updated. I mean, it's not, that's an example of us not, you know, at the national level, not really tracking reality, but the, the ADA ramps themselves, they haven't changed a ton over time. You know, there's just like kind of little features that change that we can, we can catch up with instead of overhauling the feature.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Walters.
That gets at a question that I had because I'm, I was trying to identify how fixes here were actually prioritized in the plan. And if I were doing it, I would prioritize where the ramps are missing, not where the ramps are not perfect. Is that what we're doing here?
That's the plan, yeah.
Okay. And do you know where that's reflected in the document?
Pretty sure it's in there that we are going to target the, the ones that are color-coded with red or orange.
Okay, well, we will find it. But especially given that some streets just have no ramp at all, just ends in a straight curb, that's gotta be where we focus our efforts.
Yeah, those are the ones that you, yeah.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to add that, you know, we as a society are evolving, you know, evolving in our ability to cater to differing needs of people. You know, at one point, you know, ADA ramps weren't everywhere and they weren't a priority. You know, I, for one, you know, having, you know, for a couple of years had a cane simply because of, you know, neurological surgery I had to have. But, you know, it, it really does, and I'm also partially blind. So, you know, not having depth perception, sorry, is part of it. And so, when I see people in their wheelchairs trying to get mobile, you know, as a society and cities, it's a wonderful thing that we're trying to increase the ability for all of our citizenry to participate and to be part of the life and society that we do. You know, for those of us that, you know, for those that may not have any disability at this point or any mobility issues, which is also part of the language I'd love to see added, disability and mobility issues, because sometimes people don't perceive themselves as being disabled, but they may have mobility challenges. And I think what we're trying to address are those things and what I appreciate about that. And to Mr. Walters' point about prioritizing those places that we don't have that accessibility as a top priority and then sort of looking at what we can do from there. But, you know, I really, the emphasis for me as we look forward, that was one of the things when I was looking at this part of, of moving forward the ADA ramp, the gradings, the work that's being done, you know, it, it, it is expensive. It is. But it is just as much a priority as it is for road fixing. It's just as much a priority for parks. It's just as much a priority for life for all of us in ours, in our city, you know, given the, you know, we like to encourage and believe that people can walk to wherever they're going or, you know, can do that half a mile like nothing. There are groups here, you know, when you can't even get in the biker club until you're 70. But the point that I'm making here, and I'm going to let you go forward, is that I really appreciate the focus. This is the right thing to do for us to try to fix some of those impediments for other people that are disabled and, you know, mobility challenged. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Rayum, I was just paging through the plan and I found the section on curb ramp barrier removal recommendations, which referred me back to Section C, point 2.1. And it looks like the higher priority barriers are ones identified in grievances or complaints, ones identified through public engagement efforts. So, it's great. It's based on what people, feedback from people. Also, ones that are correlated to planned capital improvement projects, department maintenance projects, policies and procedures. And then, also barriers to accessibility serving state and local government offices and facilities, transportation, transit stops. So, the prioritization on this isn't quite starting with the, with what we see as the worst and going to the best. So, I'm just wondering how that, how that plays out, if it'll be a combination of those two things?
So, we do have projects that when we go do, let's say, a road project, we'll do the ADA ramps if they need to be done. But we do have, and this is kind of the, the good part and special part about Anacortes is that we have an ADA ramp replacement fund. But we put fund every year and we go out and replace them. So, those are the ones that we'll target based on their score on here, standalone from where we're doing road projects and things like that.
Okay. And so, I think the ones that you, I mean, it's pretty obvious which ones are high priority based on their location and the need and the traffic there.
Yeah, I think before this plan, we did just base it on like if it's near a school and not like this.
Okay.
So, we'll have better data now to drive that ADA ramp replacement program.
Okay, great. And I think Mr. Walters might have something to add.
Yes, well, it seems to me the criteria should just highlight, you know, the, the places where there's no ramp at all, especially the corridors where there's no ramp at all. And I don't think that those crit, those prioritization criteria as currently written get at that. The first one, barriers that are identified in grievances and complaints totally makes sense. Obviously, we're getting complaints about something. And then, the next one is those identified through public engagement efforts. Again, people are highlighting these for us, that makes sense. But, you know, if you're doing a capital improvement project, if it's part of the project, sure, well, we bring it up to standard. But what if it's, you know, next door there? Should we really spend the money on that when there's a, a block away, no curb ramp at all? It's, it's those curb ramps that don't exist that I would like us to be able to target. And I don't think the plan as written prioritizes those.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Fantini.
I just have a question because I feel like we build a lot of sidewalks and, and obviously, we now have a fund for that, for the ADA and everything. What about maintenance? Because as we're talking about how to prioritize these, to me, the number one biggest priority should be where there is heavy usage. I mean, I understand wanting to put them where they don't exist, but what's the maintenance? But like, is there a maintenance plan behind any of these? If that, because obviously, ground around here definitely shifts and-
Yeah, we have, we have a sidewalk maintenance program that we do through the streets crew and the operations. So, it's, it's funded. It's, I don't, they haven't said they don't have enough money to, to maintain the sidewalks.
Okay. But I do like the idea of finding out where the biggest usage is and prioritizing those ramps unless there's a place where like, there's no, there's no access anywhere nearby, in which case, we would want to address those. And, and this isn't something where we're going to do, will this happen all at one time? This is over several year period, correct?
So, there's no time limit on you executing the entire plan? That hasn't been established by any regulatory agency. We're, we're chipping away at it kind of as we go as a community.
And that kind of was going to be one of my questions too, is like, when you began, you said that like, when they evaluated us, we're doing pretty well. I mean, I think this is something we can always do better at because it's a definite need for people who, who use them. We're doing pretty well. I think 2016 was the last time that we did- I think 2016 was the last time that we did this, had a big study done around this. How did we, like, how many of these did we implement? Like, what percentage? Do you know if like, we got a lot done, a little bit? Because it seems like when I was reading the material, the most important thing was that we prioritize these as a city versus just identifying where they are.
So I didn't go back and see kind of how many sidewalk ramps that we did since the 2016 study. And the change, so the standards changed, too, you gotta keep that in mind, since it's been whatever, eight years. So the ones that were okay then are probably, might not be okay now, and those are probably identified in that, like, green color, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Rehm, I noticed, well, first of all, I just want people to know that our packet this week is 472 pages. So we all have done the best that we can, and I think we've all noticed some different things in it. But one of the things that I noticed is we did have respondents to the online survey, and with some really, I thought, good ideas of where there needs to be a focus, and it sounds like the priority scale, that's a place that'll be starting. For example, J. Avenue, 20th Street to 22nd, anyway, there's a whole list out in Skyline, and so I think that using that, and I think that staff has done a great job of seeing the need and combining with other projects, and sometimes there are ones that don't exist, but they might not be priorities because of the usage. So I think it really is a balance, and you're doing a good job. And I would just encourage again, the public, let us know, what are the ones that are really bugging you? What are the ones that are hanging you up? And Mr. Kirk Kennedy, I want to give a shout out to him, he's been involved since 2006, and has brought lots of information to the city, and has been a huge asset to us, so we have people weighing in, so I would just encourage others to do that as well, so we can do the best possible job.
Yeah, the Barrier Busters is the map that he created, and that definitely influenced the outcome of this plan.
Great.
We're gonna keep going? Are we good? All right. This shows a map of the same color coding of all the ADA ramps in the city.
Before we jump on there, Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Walters.
You can see the source of some of my concern, there is like a very large cluster of red dots north of 12th Street there, just missing ramps. Just all, all those are red. There are almost so many dots there, there probably isn't an intersection that doesn't have a red dot. That's why I think that prioritization scheme is important, because those roads aren't getting road projects, they're not next to a public facility, they're not on a transit court, they're just never gonna get done. But they lack any ramp at all. It's not a poor ramp, it's not a very poor ramp or a fair ramp, it's just not there. So I really think we should put that on the list of amendments to the plan to make some change to the prioritization scheme, so that we can address missing ramps. And then if you look, because I see Mr. Fantini pushing his button over here, if you look in like the west numbered streets, fewer dots, probably because the sidewalk doesn't exist at all.
There's no sidewalks.
And so that's not really addressed by this plan, but we have to have a plan for that, too. So I look forward to hearing about your plan for the next set of plans to address those. But in the meantime, this one that we're being asked to adopt, I think should have some prioritization scheme that actually tries to get at the red dots.
So I just have a quick question, and then we're gonna go to Mr. Fantini, related to the red dots. If we blew this map up, are those red dots, is each dot representing an entire intersection, or is it representing like a corner of an intersection? Because one of the criteria is, is there a way to get across? So is it the whole intersection, or is it part of the intersection?
The dot is individual ramps.
It's what?
It's the individual ramp.
It's the individual ramp. So if we blew this up, maybe where a red dot is, there's a green dot kitty-corner to it, where you could get across. Okay, anyway, just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Fantini.
I just wanted to go to the prioritization. So one of the things for me, I think, yes, the missing ones are important, but I'm also a big fan of survey the experts, listen to the experts, you know, do what they advise you to do. And I feel like the people who, one of the reasons why I think they set it up as a complaint, not, I think complaint is maybe even the wrong word, but the people who have the grievances, those are gonna be people that need these ramps. So if they're telling us where in town those ramps are not working for them, I think we should listen to that. And I think that's why that's the top priority, because this would be real feedback coming from real people that are using the ramps. So I don't want to get too caught up in the, well, they don't exist there, so let's definitely do all those, but I would also like to see the map blown up to see if there are any accessible maps. But I do think it's really important to, you know, I think having the word complaint in that is maybe kind of a deterrent, because we're used to getting complaints sometimes that, you know, or a lot. But listening to the people that are using the roads that can point out, hey, this is where my wheelchair, or this is where I can't navigate because I can't see and there's nothing to, you know, I think that's really a key component.
The other thing to keep in mind is how much we budget for ADA ramps, like, as a lone project per year. We'll get into the cost per ramp here in a second, but it's not a lot. It's better than, like I said, most cities have zero, so we're doing great for our size of a city, but at the same time, there's a lot of need out there for that, to have just standalone ADA ramps done or replaced.
Hey, Mr. Walters.
And I am not advocating for removal of the grievance criteria. I do not believe that anyone is filing a complaint about the one degree off slope on the imperfect ramp. They are complaining about the missing ramps. I'm just assuming that that's what the complaints are. And I don't think this is, you know, like in California, where there's an industry around finding the slope that's not 100% correct on these things. So I don't think we're that far off here, but some language around prioritizing missing over perfection, I think would be helpful.
I hope it's in there, it should be in there, that we prioritize missing ones. I remember reading it, but it's been a little while.
It could be, it's 300 pages, but I haven't found it yet.
And I do feel like that's the case, I feel like that's the case, but yeah, understandable. Okay, let's go forward.
And we can put this data on our GIS external, so people can zoom in and out on it, so you guys can get right down to the individual ramps. We just wanted to adopt it ahead of time. Oh, so we just went over this in detail, but just to go over it just for fun, so there's an ADA grievance process. Just so you guys know, too, it's not handled like an usual complaint, it's an actual grievance process that we follow, and it's prescribed. So it's not just like, thanks for your complaint, and, you know, we actually address it and get back to them and document it and everything, so. So the six-year...
I'm sorry, Mr. Young.
Just one quick little statement to, in support of that. You know, even though I know we're working with people that, you know, may take it upon themselves to, you know, give a complaint, but I do think the onus is also on those of us that see areas where we can improve it, that we also say that that's one of the areas that, you know, we think could help with mobility, you know, challenge people getting to downtown, to the restaurants, to, you know, those are the things. So, you know, sometimes, I guess, you know, what I'm saying is, I just don't want it to be solely on those with mobility issues to alert us, because that's important. But we as vision and seeing people can see areas where we need those ramps, or we need that access, so someone, you know, with even a stroller could have access to it. So I just like that idea of the onus is on seeing people, seeing people with compassion, saying, hey, that might be a problem, and it's affecting this major corridor for getting into downtown, or, you know, one of the shops, or whatever it is. So, you know, I just wanted to keep that as part of the forefront of the thought. Thank you.
You just pitched it up to me nicely. So the six-year CIP, so South Commercial is a good example. We wanted to pave that, we wanted it to be, just, we really literally just said we want to pave it. And then the state said, well, you can't unless you do the ADA ramps. And then we found out, there's 125 of them on that segment of road alone that needed to be fixed, or they were missing. So if we do that project, I'll guess 125 off the table fixed. The other one, too, like we talked about, is the ADA ramps program, and using the Barrier Busters routes that were given by Mr. Kennedy, the scheduled transit routes, obviously, if you have mobility issues, you would use transit, so make sure there's ways to get off transit safely. But warning surfaces only, so those are the, those are the ones where you put down the truncated domes.
I'm just gonna pop in and say, related to schedule transit, we had had comments from someone who had mobility issues up on H., I believe, and was trying to get to transit, and we actually, council voted to spend some of our CDBG grant on those improvements for those people, so it really, it really does make a difference.
That's right when I got here, I remember that. Okay, so this is how we'll prioritize them, gonna move along here. So this kind of, this gives you the overlay of the Barrier Busters, the scheduled transit routes, so these are the ones that are yellow and red, so these are the very poor, missing ramps. And so these go to the, what we've been talking about, like, well, if we have a certain finite amount of money, where do we target the ramps? And this is where we're proposing to do it. And TIP number 15, that's your ADA ramp program, that's just transportation engineers telling you that ADA ramp program. And these are the ones that just need the DWS. So we can do that in-house, the DWS is the truncated domes, basically. And this is another important one for us, so this is our financial plan. So it's important to keep in mind that they're saying there are $10,800 per curb ramp. Now that is if you literally just do one, and hire an engineer to design it, and go to the MOB, DMOB, and all that, just for a ramp, so the price comes down significantly if you do a bunch at a time, just so you're aware of that. We had to argue with them to get it down to $10,800, because we were like, we don't pay that much. Because they, I think they came first with $15,000 per curb ramp, and we're like, that's insane, that's not even close, but then they explained how they wanted to load it with everything that's, could be for just a ramp by itself. So the overall amount will be less, but this is just kind of worst case scenario, if we just do one at a time. The APS, the push buttons, the rapidly flashing beacons, those are also known barriers, so those amounts of money are for those, and that is, again, literally like they change the sound it's supposed to make when you hit it, or where it's located, moved slightly. So those changes just made us out of compliant pretty quickly. And again, the sidewalks and driveways are not, we didn't study those, so there are barriers still in those, but I've been looking for them a lot lately because of this plan, and like I said, on Commercial, those are the ones where the light post is right in the middle of the sidewalk, those are a problem, but there's, a majority of the time, it's already been addressed by somebody that made sure those people can get around it, that are in a wheelchair. So we plan to do an annual progress report, we recommend making an update to this plan every five years, mostly just to measure our progress, and as well as to get the updated standards, and look at what is now considered noncompliant. We did a bunch of public engagement opportunities for this plan, we had a webpage, we did an online survey, which we had 60 responses, which is pretty good. The ADA workshop, we had one attendee, and that was Mr. Kennedy. And then the draft plan was out for public comment, and we received that. We made it to the end.
Thank you, Mr. Rehm. Council, any questions that haven't been answered in the course of the presentation?
Madam Mayor Protam.
Mr. Fantini.
Just a quick one, you said that in order to receive the funding, we have to approve this. What's our deadline for approving it?
We don't have to prove it tonight. We did get asked by the Transportation Improvement Board when, and so I told them we were coming tonight, but, you know, I can just call the guy and say, it didn't happen. So we can take more time if we need to. Obviously, we'd like to just approve it tonight and move forward, but if you need more time, need more time.
Mr. Walters, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you. I noticed that there are some old email addresses in the plan, the old domain instead of the new domain. There's some language about how will the city pay for ADA barrier removal? And it says, well, we'll primarily pay for it out of the city budget. We will pay for everything out of the city budget. I mean, that's just sort of a tautology. I think that that language should be improved to say actually how we're gonna pay for it. It mentions federal and state grant funding when available, but we're gonna pay for it out of general revenue. And so I think we should highlight that. If we have other sources of funding that we reasonably anticipate mentioning, let's mention that, but how it's phrased doesn't mean anything. And then you've talked a couple times about the light poles in the sidewalk, why don't we list those in the plan?
Just wasn't in scope for the study that was done.
Okay. Could we reference it in some way, so we don't forget about it?
In this plan? I suppose so. I mean, it's referenced a few times that that's just not, hasn't been analyzed as part of the ADA plan.
Is it referenced in the document? Okay, then that's sufficient for me. My only other comment is the prioritization, still not quite comfortable with that scheme. But maybe you can explain that, because maybe you can find the provision in the plan where it actually highlights the missing ramps. It sure seems like when you get down to your charts and your maps, you really are prioritizing the missing ramps, but I don't see it in the scheme. And after we get past those ones that are on the map, then we're gonna need to rely on those prioritization schemes.
Mr. Young.
Well, I hear you, and I understand, and I agree with some of the language changes, but is that a reason for us not to move forward tonight? I'm just, that's really not a criticism, it's just really the hope that we could sort of move forward if we could, you know, I know that we want to take a look at, you know, how we are prioritizing, I totally agree with that, you know, and just sort of evaluate that, but is that a reason we can't move this forward to resolution tonight? Do you see any reason why that would be something, or you would be hesitant? I'm open, really.
Mr. Walters.
Thank you. I'm not asking for perfection, but I thought that some of these changes would improve the document, and that we could then approve it on consent.
So I'm inclined to think that it would, I feel like if we approve something, it's sort of done, and if we don't have a really hard timeline, if this is something that, if those edits or fines are easily done in the next couple of weeks, and then that could be brought back for the consent agenda, and I'm seeing some nods. Mr. Fantini has a question.
Just a quick question, again, not to go back to the prioritization of this all, but again, I think that if the big thing is the prioritization that we're sticking on tonight, when we talk about that grievance process, I don't think people are just gonna be, I want, again, I want to prioritize where people are using the ramps, or where the people who would use them are telling us they need them. So I feel like that grievance process, part of the, I mean, the grievances that come in, you get them now, are they only for fixing ramps, or are they also for ramps that are missing?
I would say the Barrier Busters maps, I could bring those back up for you, but I would say that's, that is public input on where we should do the ramps, and it's years and years and years of ramps, just those ones alone. So unless we do a road project that takes out 125 of them, those ramps alone will eat up your budget for the ADA ramps.
The ones on Commercial and the, yeah, which is a big source of need as well.
Yeah, I can bring up those.
I mean, I don't have a problem approving this tonight, but I don't, it seems like that we're probably not gonna get that done, so.
Madam Mayor Protam, one more follow-up question.
Okay, Mr. Young.
Yeah, no, Mr. Rehm, so you're saying there's no real impact on us not getting this done tonight? Are there any hesitations you have, or how does it affect? You know, I guess, because you hear what, you know, yeah, tell me what you think, honestly.
I guess my only hesitation is the contract is done, like, we've used up the consultants and have to go back in, but that's not, that's not a huge deal. I do feel like the prioritization is here, I mean, this map basically spells out years and years of projects.
Right.
So, and I do feel like the prioritization is spelled out in there somewhere, I just don't have it off the top of my head of actually where.
But is that something we can come back to and flush out further details after this goes forward, or does that impact this?
Well, this also helps us... Well, this also helps us, and again, we could do this, we can come back next week. I think a resolution cannot be on consent, though. Just, I don't know if that's a city attorney question, but.
If council asks it to come back on consent, it can be on consent.
There we go. All right. So that makes me feel better. So, yeah, we could, those are my only concerns. I got to bring the consultant back on and get it adjusted for the few things. I might be able to just edit those myself, but.
So that wasn't my hope, that maybe it's not enough to bring the consultant back on. I don't think that it, I'm hoping that we don't need to do that. Mr. Walters?
No, I think this is pretty simple stuff.
So just go over it one more time, what you're asking for.
I was asking for amending the budget language to reflect how we're actually going to pay for these things. Amending the prioritization scheme to note that missing ramps will be prioritized over imperfect ramps. Not to delete the other components of the prioritization scheme like the complaint-based system. And to correct the email addresses.
Okay, that all seems, I'll get right to you, Mr. Fantini. No worries. I think it's, I mean, reasonable to, I don't know that we need to say that we need to prioritize missing over imperfect, but if it's not in there, maybe we do. Email addresses should be an easy correct. And then also, we're going to pay for it through general fund, TIB, sidewalk improvement, whatever. I think that should all be something that we wouldn't need the consultant for, I'm hoping.
I'm just hoping to have the source files and stuff. But yeah, it should be, we can do it.
Okay, let's, if we could try for that, that would be fantastic. And, yeah, I think that that would be great. And then, Mr. Fantini, you have one more question?
I'm good.
Okay, so.
Then we bring it back on consent agenda. Is that what you're, okay.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking in the next two or three weeks, because it might take a minute. I don't want to.
I mean, I get it on the agenda for next week. I'd have to have it done.
Mayor Protem, I remember now.
Yes, Mr. Fantini.
So I just want to go back to the prioritization thing one more time. If we say them.
If you must.
I must.
Okay, please make it brief.
So I just want to say, again, what I'm worried about is if we prioritize the missing ramps, I think we're going to miss out on the big dip projects like Commercial Avenue, which has 176, but a lot of those ramps are already there.
Okay, so my understanding is that Commercial Avenue, when it gets done paved, it's also going to get the ramps done. But as a general rule, we're not going to prioritize imperfect ramps over no ramps. If we have one with a corner with no ramp, and we have a corner with an imperfect ramp that doesn't have the little yellow dots, we're not going to fix that. We're not going to put the little yellow dots on, probably, but that's a lot cheaper. I feel like we're getting, we're going too far into this. We need to wrap this up. We really do.
We would prioritize wherever somebody told us they need the ramp, whether how it feels missing, or maybe we did some upgrades.
Yeah, I think it's going to work. I really have confidence in this.
All right. So we're going to come back at a date uncertain.
Thank you, everyone. After that lively discussion, we are going to move forward to item 7B, which is a contract award for water booster stations generator replacement projects. And this is an item for discussion and possible action. Welcome, Mr. Ludeman.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council, and the public. What we have tonight is just a standard replacement of two water pump station generators. The current units, I believe, are 26 and 27 years old. We've found that at about 22 years of age, they start having part replaceability problems, hard to get parts for. So this is a standard replacement coming out of replacement fund. It's for next year, so it's, right now, it's unbudgeted money. But the lead time is about 40 weeks or so to get them. So we're trying to hit those orders as soon as we can, so they can be replaced next summer. And I guess I'll answer any questions you have.
Well, Mr. Young?
Yeah, I don't have any question. I was going to joke with Mr. Ludeman a little bit, but I decided not to, unless there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Short event, I don't have any questions, but I was going to make a motion unless there's someone with questions, even if there is.
It looks like there are not questions. Go for it.
Thank you. Hooray. I move that the city authorized the mayor to sign a contract, 24-257-RR01, with Cummings and the amount of $193,317.94 for the purchase of two new generators for A Avenue and the Point Water Booster Stations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Fantini. Mr. Franciac, would you please take the role?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Mr. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. Seabuck?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Mr. Scars?
Okay. Our last item on the agenda is 7C. It's the U.S. EPA Lead and Copper Rule revisions, and this is a presentation. We've been waiting for these for a while, I think.
I'm back. I'm actually going to hand this off to Brent Christensen. He's the Distribution System Supervisor. Just a couple of quick notes. We're bringing this to you tonight because we are going to mail about 1,800 homes a postcard, which we'll get into detail what that says. So we just want to make sure, hey, council, you're probably going to get some phone calls about the postcard. The other thing is that the city of Anacortes has an excellent water source. We're really lucky. And so we're really kind of, in a weird way, excited about these new rules, if you believe it or not, because we get to share and tote more about our water quality in our system than we had, we're being made to more, which is kind of a good thing for this line of work to actually get out there and really tell people our story and how well, how clean the water is and how good of the source we have. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Brent.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Christensen.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Appreciate it. Mayor Protem, members of the council, public. Like Andy said, my name is Brent Christensen, currently Water Distribution Supervisor. Real quick about me, been with the city 16 and 1/2 years, all 16 and 1/2 years. I have been in the water department. So it's kind of exciting for me to do this for my first time, come and be able to present to you guys and talk a little bit about this. This is just kind of a overview of the slideshow. We have been working closely with HDR on this notification. And as you know, HDR, they're nationwide. They've been doing this for many other water purveyors around the nation. So they're really, really good at what they're doing. Just kind of a quick overview of what we're going to do. I'm not going to read everything verbatim to you. I would appreciate any questions. Keep it casual. Anything you guys want to know, feel free to ask me. Hopefully, I got the answer. If I don't, I got Terry and I got Andy right here that can help me out, so. So these are just potential sources of lead, you know, different paints, imported candies, all that kind of stuff that they've essentially identified and, you know, banned and taken out of those. So our area of interest is going to be potential sources of the lead in our drinking water. So one of the things that they found is in lead and galvanized piping, there could be the potential for lead sloughing off and getting into potable drinking water. One of the things to keep in mind where it says copper pipes, so this lead and copper rule revision, they're not saying the copper pipes are bad. They're saying the solder that was used during a period of time to make those connections potentially had lead in it, or large amounts of lead. So it's not that copper water lines are bad, it's just the way that they were connected for a period of time. So this kind of gives you an idea of, you know, what's in there. Where, at the bottom, where it says lead can be dissolved into the water system, another thing to keep in mind, too, is that's also based on the source of your water and how you're treating it. Anacortes gets their water off of the Skagit Valley, Skagit River. And the way we treat it, through years and years and years of testing, we've found that our treatment process does not cause that lead to slough off. So something to keep in mind. We have a very good track record of that as well, so. These are some of the different people that can be impacted by the amounts of lead. I don't think I need to kind of go into any of that really. So this is kind of a brief history of the Lead and Copper Rule, the EPA taking it into effect in 1991. The Lead and Copper Rule revision that we're talking about now is they're asking the water purveyors or the utility to start tracking what the customer side of the meter service line is. All right, we know what public side is. We've installed it, we've kept track of it. Now they're saying, well, we're going to put it on you to try to figure out what is in the customer side home from the meter to the home, which isn't our responsibility. We don't maintain those, but they're asking us to do public outreach to find out what those are, and if there's the potential there, to make them aware of it. So real quick, this is just kind of a quick overview of identifying the most impacted areas, strengthening drinking water treatment requirements. The city of Anacortes, very early on, in fact, one of the biggest things that I've found in all this is in 1952, the city of Anacortes adopted a code that said, if you are not using these specific water lines, we will not allow you to connect to our meter. So thankfully, those water lines were lead water lines. So whoever adopted that back in 1952, great job. So that really helped us in this project, so. Increasing our sampling reliability, we sample lead and copper right now quite a bit. They're asking us to do a little bit more sampling. That's fine. We have the personnel to do it. We're happy to do it. Our track record speaks volumes on that as well, so we're not afraid of that. Improving the risk communication, that's the outreach to the public. That's getting in touch with these customers that we don't know what their service line is. How do we make contact with them? How do we reach out to them and try to get that information? So this is just kind of a real quick overview of what's been going on and where we're at today. October 16th is a pretty important day. We'll talk about that here in just a minute. So public lead service line inventory. So what they're saying is we need to know where the city stands by October 16th, 2024. What's our inventory? What do we know that we have on the city side? What do we know that the customers have? So that involved the water department, GIS, getting together and really start, you know, getting down to the roots of things. That's where we found this code that was put into act in 1952 as well. So we're able to use those things to say, well, we know that after 1952, they could not connect to our water system if they had these types of water lines. So we can use that to help us when we're weeding out all this stuff, so. So this is kind of the way the EPA lays it out. So they say, either have a lead service line, you have a galvanized service line, you have a non-led service line, and if it's unknown, we're going to call it lead. That's just kind of what they say. It's up to us to prove to them that we know that it's not a lead service line or contains any possible lead in it. So that's where we're going to get into our status. So if you look right here, on the Anacortes service side, 12,836 of our service lines are known to have no lead components in it. 320 of those are unknown. So those are just, we don't know what they are yet. We need to do some investigating on them. EPA says, well, if they're unknown, we treat them as lead. But as you can see, there are no lead or galvanized in there. On the property owner's side, we started out at 11,304. Currently, we're at 1,852, that we do not know what is on the customer side. About August, I believe it was, city side, we were at about 3,500. Property owner's side, we were at about 9,200. So finding these different codes and reaching out and really doing some work, in just a short month, we're able to chop these numbers right down, so it's pretty good. So the idea being, as Andy had mentioned, we have 1,800 customers out there that we're unsure what their service line material is. So we need to figure that out, and we need to reach out to those 1,800 customers, and we need to see if they have knowledge of it. A lot of people know, I've replaced my line. I know what it is. So trying to reach out to the public and get that information from those 1,800 unknowns. Also, providing sampling if customers call and request it. We do that now as well, but that's just making that more aware to the customers out there. So currently, right now, this is actually on the city website under our ArcGIS mapping. Rob and Marley have done a great job identifying and actually putting on the map what service line materials we know to be non-led. So you can actually go onto the GIS map, click on either a city side service or a customer side service, and it'll tell you what the material it is. On the city, on the public, or excuse me, on the private side, if there isn't a service there, it means we don't necessarily know what the material it is, but we know it's past that date of 1952, so we're safe still because we've enacted that code. So it can't be. So staying informed, like I said, the inventory of all this is on the Anacortes webpage. There's a link here for the EPA and all the regulations that they have. It's a real great read if you want to go to sleep. So this is kind of an idea of a mailer that we are going to be sending out to these 1,800 customers. This is just an idea, I believe this is out of Louisville Water Department. HDR helps us put together these mailers that we're going to send out to these customers in the hopes to say, hey, we don't know what your service line is. Can you give us a call? Can we talk on the phone? Can you give us any information? Can we, you know, look into this a little bit more? So we're making them aware of it. Like I said, a lot of these people probably already know what their service line material is, so I think it's, I think that's going to be a real good thing. So the press release right now, it is due to go out, what do we have, the 16th? That has already been written and is in final draft and review form, so it's ready to go. Our inventory website, that's supposed to be up on the 16th, it's already up, ready to go. These postcards or mailers that we're coming up with, they're in their final review form. Those will be ready to be mailed out on the 21st. And then we're just asking the people to basically call in with any of their information. If we haven't heard from them, by November 16th, we're looking at trying to go around maybe door to door and kind of making contact with them and kind of answering any questions we can, anything like that. Discussion, any questions?
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Mr. Walters?
Thank you for the presentation. I think you got a comprehensive approach here. My question is simply, first of all, what happens if they do have a lead water line? I assume we're not replacing it for the customer because it's not our responsibility. It's our only responsibility to make them aware of that.
So it's about taking an inventory so that we can keep track of that and let the EPA know, and making them aware of what they have and that they should be looking in the process of changing that out. So it's more of an information, you know, getting them the knowledge and why it's important to change it. A lot of people don't know, you know, they're not sure what they have or why they should change it out. A lot of people just wait until they have a leak to replace their water line, so. But one of the good things is with our source of water and the way we treat it, there isn't that sloughing, that potential for sloughing of that lead off. So we're standing in a really good spot, you know, even if there is that lead pipe, it's not the end of the world because we're, the way we're treating everything is the proper way, and it doesn't cause that lead to slough off of the pipe, if that makes sense. But we're still going to encourage them and let them know and give them the information and encourage them to make those changes.
And if they don't know and we need to determine it, can they? And, and if they don't know, and we need to determine it, can they, can they just look in their meter box?
Yes. So that's one of the things that my crew is currently doing, so we're in the process of a mass radio changeout for our radio reads, going from drive-by to fix based. So currently, when we go out and we dig those meter boxes out, we're taking an extra five minutes to look on both the city side and the customer side, and put that information into Cartograph. That's what also has kind of helped us gain a lot of this information. And if we see that there might be a potential for something there, we're making notes of it, and then we're trying to make contact with that homeowner to let them know. So we've been proactive coming into this, because we knew it was coming, so, thank you.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Christensen, first of all, thank you. It's a pleasure to be part of a presentation that you're making, and I can tell your heart is in the work that you do, the quality of service.
Appreciate that.
I really appreciate this presentation. You know, as I was thinking about before, I am a fan of the taste of our water. I would be very clear, I've had water, you know, I drink water wherever I go, and it is horrible. I mean, oh my God, you know, and I'm like struggling. And then I buy, I buy bottled water, you know, when I'm traveling, and it is horrible. You know, we need a rating system on that, you know, alone, and, and I would follow that rating system. But what, you know, and it's a true thing, you know, but what I really appreciate about what we're doing, and when I think of our water and the work that goes in here, I think of Flint, Michigan, you know, I think of other cities and places that struggle with water quality, or ignore water quality, and the deception of the impacts, long-term impacts that it have on people as a whole. And so, you know, if you're living in old houses, houses that have been in existence, and you know, just sort of the transmission of water is a huge thing, and one that I think the illumination we're doing now, in working on water quality, ensuring that that water quality doesn't have any backend effects on lives, quality of lives, health, we only beginning to find out some of the things that we thought was good. You know, at one point, we thought asbestos, you could just roll in asbestos and it would be okay, and there were, you know, videos about it. Look at this now, right? And, you know, and so, that's why I am a fervent supporter of the work that, you know, your team and the water department is doing for our quality of water. You know, I'm an advocate for that. There's one thing, I know this is about lead, and it's so important, and I appreciate the letters going out, or postcards that'll be going out to households. In my household, you know, look, we, what do we know? You know, I can tell you a lead pipe, my spouse was a surgeon. You know, you ask about medicine, but this not medicine. So, you know, I wouldn't know. So that's why I would appreciate that linkage when you guys open up and say, hey, you've got this, and then I say, oh, okay, how do I fix it?
Absolutely.
All right. One additional thing that I know may come up later on, but I think it's just as critical, particularly in this time and age, is also microplastics that are in our waters, and that are also in our food, and also coming through. You know, those are some of the stuff that I think that it's worth it that we invest to ensure that it also addresses those things that are coming. But what I appreciate about what I'm seeing here, and the work that's being done in the water department, is superb.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we have changed solely to a service line of, it's called PEXA, so it's essentially a polyurethane line, but it's times 1,000. So it's stronger, the way it's made is better, there's zero sloughing, the friction loss is not there. So, like you're saying, asbestos was the latest, and every, you know, the water industry's constantly adapting, and we're, the nice thing about the city of Anacortes, I have to say, is we're always at the forefront, and we want to be using the things that, you know, provide our customers with the best product possible at the, at the end of the day. So that's what we've done for all time I've been here, so. And obviously, they were doing it long before me, so we'll make sure we continue it on.
Mr. Fantini.
Thank you, and thank you, Brent. Great job on your first presentation before council, very good job. Question, what I really like about this, too, is that as we are collecting kind of all the data from the inventory that we have, it's going to be really helpful to inform us on like, infrastructure changes going forward, that, that kind of thing. I think that I definitely am probably one of the unknowns. My house was built in 1925, and I think when I see my water pipe that freezes every winter, it's probably a copper one.
When you get that mailer, you call me. And I encourage, and I encourage any of the council members as well to reach out, you know, have the community reach out to the water department. I'm happy to field all those calls, answer any questions that I can to the public, you know, that's, that's, that's a good part of my job, being able to talk to them and, and inform them. And I don't mind stopping out there and talking to them and letting them know, and doing a little digging around and seeing what I can do to help. So that's what it's all about, is just public information.
I very much appreciate the approach, too, of how we're going to send the postcards, but that also someone will kind of go door to door with the door hangers and really engage them. Do you know if there's going to be any kind of, like, if they, if they do need to have their water line replaced, is there any kind of like incentivizing that we can, like, because that would be, they would know that they have lead, and obviously, I would hope that most people would want to replace their lead, but, you know, with housing costs the way they are, and a lot of these are older homes that probably might not have been fixed up for a while, is there going to be any kind of incentivizing around that, or?
That'll be next year's budget meeting, I'm just kidding. I'll let, I'll let Andy jump in on.
I'm sure it wasn't a coincidence, but President Biden did just announce $2.6 billion in replacing lead pipe throughout the country, and that's for people's service line on their side of the system, and they're not giving it to utilities, I don't believe, so.
So yes, there probably will be some opportunities for that.
And some cities, as a council, could decide, you know, we're just going to go and we get every last little piece of lead out of our city. You, you can do that, I have to deal with the attorney a little bit around it, but for the most part, other cities are doing that. We were told that by our consultant, that some cities are like, hey, you've got a lead pipe, and hey, we're going to pay to have it replaced, so.
Great, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I want to thank Mr. Christensen for an excellent presentation, and looks like it's quieting down around here, so I am happy to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here.